Welcome to our Select Board meeting. Happy New Year to everybody, our first Select Board meeting of the new year. Hopefully it's a prosperous one for everybody. I'm the Vice Chair, I'm taking over for Charlie because Charlie's voice is a little raspy today, so he asked me to take over. Jackie Sears to my left, Charlie Knickie, Chair, and Jim LeBree on the end of the table. So we're gonna start off the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no appointments scheduled tonight. Although we do have an application that came in late. Can we address that, Bob, since it wasn't on the agenda?
Not a good idea.
Not a good idea?
No.
Okay, so we'll wait till the next meeting. No hearings tonight, and we're down quickly to open time for the public. We have one public member here, anything you'd like to address us on?
Nope.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, number five reports, payroll, bill, and warrants.
I have payroll, but you wanna read them?
Sure. Okay, payroll warrant PD 17 hyphen 28 for forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Payroll warrant 17 hyphen 28 for two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Can I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Wanna start signing those?
They're all signed.
No bill warrants?
They're all done.
Jackie, you're all signed?
All done.
Okay, Charlie signed them? Okay, next, Bob, we have Town Administrator report.
Yes, I have a brief report. Nearly all of my time has been taken up with the special town meeting, the warrant, and it is completed, it is signed, it is posted, so, and we are ready to go.
Ready to go.
And now it's the budget process for 2018. I wanna also mention that decision was made by the Chair this afternoon that Town Council will be available by telephone the night of the special town meeting, but will not be here physically. So, she's fine with that. I think it would be an unnecessary cost to bring her out here for articles that are -- they've been thoroughly vetted, and there aren't any legal issues that I'm aware of. And lastly, I was requested to check with our insurance carrier, Cabot, on the issue of using town equipment on private ways. I did speak with our insurer this afternoon. She said to me, "This is not an issue, that we are fully insured for any activity with public vehicles on private ways." She said, "This is an issue in other towns, and the company has encountered this question before, and that's the answer." And she said, "But let me just verify your policy." So, we ended the conversation, then she called back and was reassuring that with us in particular, we are insured for work that is done by town vehicles on private ways.
So, town vehicles and town staff are covered?
Yes, not an issue. We are insured.
Okay, that's great to know, thanks.
Just upcoming, we have a meeting on the 24th, a special town meeting. There's also a selectman meeting at 6:00 PM at the school, in the library, prior to the special town meeting. I'll be doing the Department Head meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock, and the Mass Mutual Association Annual Meeting is coming on January 21st and -- 20th and 21st. That is where the Governor speaks on Saturday, and where there's a strong indication of what local aid will be in the coming year. He usually gives out a number. We won't have our specific number, but we ought to have some kind of percentage so that we can plug that into the revenue chart that we have for the fiscal 2018. Plan will be, as far as the budget process, to have a budget assembled, put together, for review by the selectmen shortly after the Governor gives us the local aid message at the annual meeting. It's a tight timetable, a little bit late this time, but we can get that done. That's the report. Anything else?
Okay, just one thing for the public listening. January 24th, 7:00 PM, special town meeting, it'd be great if we can get as many people out there as possible, because a lot of times we have a very small showing, so if you're available, please show up for it. It's at the Norris School. Okay, Report of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Is that available, or is somebody supposed to?
Actually, we did, after this was printed, it was a decision by the Chair that we would not take this up at this meeting.
So we're gonna put it off for another meeting?
So it'll be put off, yes.
Okay. Now, old business, discussion of plowing a private way. This has been a highly vetted topic. So Charlie, you wanna start into it?
Well, this has started since 1984, and probably before that. Basically, the town has a number of private ways that it's been plowing since it started plowing. And it came to the attention of one of the residents, or two of the residents, that there was a concern. It appears that the roads of concern are Bass Cove Rightofway, a dirt section of Camp John, Wallace Road, Bissonette Circle, Old County Road by the Westfield Line, Helen Drive Extension, and Pomeroy Middle Road Extension. Not aware of any other roads that are actually of concern in this. Jim, you don't know anything else, do you?
There's other private roads, but also private roads that the town seems to be plowing. I think you got them covered.
The town Select Board historically has allowed these streets to be plowed in the interest of public safety, so that ambulance, fire, police, so on and so forth could have access to these properties. The town Select Board took a formal vote January of last year to continue this practice, and to keep searching to see if there's any way of addressing this concern, and that vote was for one year. The year is up as of basically this week. The Board has put a straw vote together for a special town meeting, so we can hear the concerns of the residents on this, and if the residents so desire, they can petition the Select Board, basically, and if there's 200 signatures petitioning to put it on the May town election, then the town will formally vote to authorize the Select Board to make decisions as to if a road should be plowed or not. At this point in time, we're in a situation of the classic Catch-22. Prior to this Board, prior to the Board, prior to us, prior to prior to prior, all the way back to the 80s, this has been going on, but the town's never taken a formal vote at an election to authorize the Selectmen to have this authority to do this. And we're trying to move through this, get it done the proper way, and then let the Board, whoever the Board may be at that point, decide what's appropriate. So at this point in time, the question sits, do we continue this practice for a while?
Yeah, I think like you said, we're in the middle of winter, so it's kinda hard to discontinue our practice and make people plow the private ways for the rest of the winter, in my opinion. But before we go there, can you, maybe for the clarification of everybody out there, what makes a road private and stay private versus being accepted as a public way?
I'll let Jim answer that. You wanna do that, or you want me to? Trying to save my voice here.
Let's hear your version, and then I'll...
Okay, my version is prior to the establishment of zoning regulations in the town, all roads were considered town roads. Once the zoning was established, there was protocols for construction of a road, and it took a town meeting vote to accept it. Obviously, our zoning regulations only became effective, I'm guessing, in the 80s. So, prior to that, any road that was out there was assumed to be a town road. Roads we're speaking of, in and of itself, are old town roads, but they've never been accepted by the town. And now the criteria is that we'll only plow a road once it's accepted by the town, and it has to have ex-minime of criteria, drainage requirements, slope requirements, visibility, so on and so forth, width, that kinda stuff.
Yeah, I pretty much agree. The subdivision regulations, which were voted on by this town, I think we rewrote those a couple of years ago, updating them to today's standards, which pretty much dictate how a road will be built, like Charlie said, grades, slopes, water management, stormwater management, and so on, and inspections of the road as it's being built. So, all that being said, and then at the end of the process, it becomes a town road. I went through and looked at these town roads that we are plowing, and it's interesting. I know one of the roads that stuck out, Bass Cove Road, which is off of Pequot and Cottage, I believe. That road actually went to the town for vote to be a public way in 1994, and was refused, and now remains a private road as of today. So I actually went a little bit further, and I started digging, looking at the roads currently that are private ways and are plowed, and I came up with 76 homes that we have to deal with.
And how many roads?
Bass Cove Road, just like Charlie read, pretty much the same one. The dirt section of Camp John, Wallace Road, Bissonette Circle, Old County Road. Well, Old County Road is unique because it is a public way, or public road, but when it gets to the Westfield Line, it loops into Westfield, and then into the driveway of the home, and the plow truck has no way to turn around at the line, has to continue on. So, that's a unique situation, it's one home. And then Helen Drive, nobody could find any kind of documentation that was ever the extension on Helen. Nobody could find any documentation for the addition, the new section being approved, so that's listed as a private way. So, I came up with 76 homes, and to just, I know Mr. Pellegrini's been in here several times, and reminding us that it is illegal to plow a private road. To stop, like I mentioned last week, to stop plowing the road, and if there's an emergency, there's liability involved on that end of it as well. So, I think, in my opinion, I said, the Board should go about it maybe this way. I think we should send these 76 homes a letter, a registered letter, saying that, we should draft a letter saying that it's been brought to our attention that we're plowing your private road, and we shouldn't be, and we can't, as a Board, make this decision, it's illegal. And we're gonna hold a public hearing, maybe dedicate one night to a public hearing on this, invite these people in, and explain the situation, and tell them what the options are. We can have, one, they can get 200 signatures, and we can get this bylaw put on the ballot, it has to be a ballot, for May. Two, get your road submitted as a public way, and get it approved that way. And if you're successful, that's great. If you're unsuccessful, well, this is the last winter you're gonna be plowed. And this gives them adequate notice, and it'll probably, you know, for next season. So, I mean, that's sort of the route I think we should go, but just to stop is, I think, a liability on its own, so, that's my thinking on it anyway. I think we should at least hold a public hearing, notify the people, hold a public hearing, and then let them know, because if they're not watching tonight, they have no idea we're talking about their street.
Yep.
And just to stop plowing would be inappropriate.
Did you say Bissonette Circle?
Bissonette Circle, there was, it's roughly a 300-foot cul-de-sac that was approved, and then they added on roughly 40 homes onto that. That has not been approved yet. That's Bobcat Hollow off White Lof Road.
Okay, Jackie, what do you think?
Well, I agree. I like his plan, and I think that we should definitely have a public hearing so that people can understand what we're trying to do. And I also think that for us to just stop plowing, it is a dangerous situation that we shouldn't do that.
Shannon?
Agreed. We should definitely continue on until we have a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
We wanna post a public hearing for the end of March? Sounds good to me, so, we'll post a public hearing for the end of March?
End of March.
Mike, I also think we need a vote, at least to continue the policy until the end of the fiscal year, I would say. That'll give us time to go through.
Yeah, I agree with that. We cannot stop plowing at this point, and this would give us time to get it on the ballot, and hold a public hearing to, you know, give these residents an idea what they gotta do.
Right, give them plenty of time before next winter. So I guess we need a motion to extend the policy from January 1st, or whenever the law ends, till the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2017? Anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
You're second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
There's a Selectance meeting on the 21st of March, if we follow the regular schedule.
Sure.
We could do a public hearing.
So, one question is, you mentioned 75 homes. If everybody shows up, they're not gonna fit in here.
Right.
So we may need to have a different venue for that.
Well, in the letter, why don't we have them respond to us if they're gonna attend?
Still, it's a public hearing, if they don't respond, show up, we still have to deal with them.
Then we gotta book the Norris School.
Yeah, I almost think we should book it up front.
Just book the Norris School?
I would book up front.
Well, then raises the question, should we have it as a regular Selectance meeting?
That's what we're gonna do, yeah.
At what point in time is the cable contract where you can broadcast from there?
I'm trying to get that done by May.
By May, okay, so that won't be done for March. So, we're talking 76 homes, and you could have several people there, but that's just the people on private ways. You may have people on private ways that wanna call, so it may be a lot, but may not.
I think we should book Norris, and that way we can put it in the letter that we send out?
Yeah.
Okay. Paul? Is there any way to record over at Norris?
We could record it like we do the Select, like we do the town meetings.
But it won't be a live feed?
But it would not go online, but we could record it, and it would broadcast the volume.
Okay, so it'll be that quick, okay.
Yeah.
May I ask Bob a question?
You may.
Did our contract get returned to us?
Yes.
So we're now in the new?
Yes, Velda sent it to me yesterday.
All right, 'cause that's gonna trigger grant money and stuff to buy equipment to wire to school and all the rest of it.
Go forward now.
Okay.
So it's the 21st of March, you said?
Right, our regular Select Board meeting. Okay, number seven, new business, discussion of IT services. Who has that one?
Let's have Bob with that.
Bob, do you wanna take that on?
Well, we had loss of town email on Thursday of last week. It was restored on Saturday afternoon for most of us, although not for the Highway Department. And this, I guess, brought to a head what amounts to a chronic problem. Our informal IT person, Art Lawrence, very frustrated with the service that we're getting, and have gotten from a company in Utah, Blue Host, recommended that I be in touch with Northeast IT to see if they are willing to take it over. One of the problems that we discovered was that the server, 30-gig server, was filled with email, and we have to keep email. So, what he did was, he purchased a 60-gig server, then had to migrate 30-gig over. The company in Utah couldn't find time to do that in any satisfactory amount of time, and so we finally asked, I think it was on Friday, asked Northeast IT to do it. They got it done by Saturday afternoon. Now, this afternoon, we lost IT again. I know in one case, in Velda's case, she can't send or receive. Mine seems to be okay at this point, but it seems like we have ongoing problems, and it's time to make a change. I did call Northeast IT today, haven't had a return call, just to see what their terms would be. And, you know, at our next meeting, I can bring some information to you on what companies are available in the area to provide email services, and what seems to make the most sense for us at this point.
Well, you say you lose connectivity. Is it just we're losing connection with the server? So it may be an equipment issue, or?
I'm not sure what Velda's issue is. We didn't lose connection with the server last Thursday. The server was filled and just wouldn't accept. And I guess it just crashed.
So we need to expand our storage from 30-gig?
We did, we have done that. We now have a 60-gig server, which is going to be filling up, so...
I mean, that additional capacity should be cheap money, quote-unquote.
Yes, it wasn't expensive.
So we should go up to, you know, a lot more than 60?
Maybe a lot more. It wasn't expensive at all. It was the frustration of the company that's supposed to be serving us in Utah being unwilling to do it in a timely way. So they were willing to let us not have email services for a much longer period of time, until they could get to it, so they seem to have too much work to do, and it's time.
Just one thought on clearing away some of the email. You gotta, you have to keep email if it's addressed to you, but if you're CC'd, you don't have to keep email.
Right.
So if they go through and purge everything you're CC'd on, they'll save a lot of capacity.
And we seem to get a lot of ads here as well, which I delete, yeah.
Okay.
So I should have something for you by the 24th, by the meeting at 6:00 PM on the 24th, on options.
But you're up and going now.
We are, I am, Velda is not. So I had to call Northeast again this afternoon to see if they would do something to bring her email back. Her ability to communicate is as important as anyone in the building, because she does a lot of, gets a lot of stuff done.
I mean, if Northeast IT can't do it, then we should get somebody else, because it doesn't seem like it's a real complicated issue.
Apparently, the unhappiness is out there, because I got an unsolicited call today from another vendor in North Hampton wanting to know if we're looking for email services. So, we'll see what's available, and what may seem to make sense, and have a report.
What's the total dollar value on the contract? Well, this is a service contract, so I'm guessing it's not, it's gonna be under the bid limits. I mean, we'll find out when you get a quote, but...
John, I had asked the Fire Department to give us an update, that's why Patrick's here.
I was wondering why you're here, Patrick? Okay, so before we go on to seven, let's run back, we'll put it under open time for the public, maybe. Patrick, thanks for coming.
Yeah, he called me today.
Sally, what has happened? You were at the pool.
I was there, I was at the pool. Happy New Year to everyone.
You too.
With the new year comes new changes.
All good, we hope.
So, wanted to speak tonight. I haven't spoken since September, was the last time I was here. Give you a couple of updates on what's going on at the Fire Department. First, I'll give you our equipment update. At this point, the ambulance two, A2 is the primary ambulance out the door, A1 is out of service. In fact, it was delivered down to New Jersey today for electronic issues, had to go down to the manufacturer of the ambulance in order to fix this problem. It's been an ongoing problem for quite a long time, and it's been a little bit of a burden for us not having that second ambulance. So it's down there right now, they're telling us about two weeks before we get it back, so. Engine three, engine four, engine one are here at Center Station, they're all in service and in running capacity. The tanker and the brush truck are at the Pond Station at this point as well. As far as scheduling goes, I just wanna, you know, reassure everyone that the schedule is, again, being filled. We're having great coverage on nights. I can tell you that since I spoke to you, the night shifts are, for coverage, for instance, for October, there was only one night shift not covered. Out of November, there was only two nights that we just had no coverage. However, in December, every night was covered, including the holidays, and as far as January goes, every night in January has two EMTs on, so we're full. So we're doing very well in that capacity. As far as daytime coverage, once again, we're 100% covered during the days, between the hours of eight and five.
Sorry, is the coverage better because we're getting more people on staff that are willing to take coverage?
Yes, yep, yep, that's exactly right. The chief workman has hired some, several new people who are very motivated. I think actually, like I said, I may have said that the last time, that we have some new motivated people that we were training at that time, and now they're on the schedule. So they're picking up plenty of shifts, so we're doing well.
Great to hear.
So with that said, going over call volume, for 2015, our call volume was 529 calls. For 2016, we had 675 calls for service, which is an increase of 146 more calls for service in that calendar year.
Is this all ambulance, or is it?
This is ambulance and fire.
Okay, do you have a breakdown by chance?
I don't have the breakdown for that. I can get that for you next time, John, if you'd like. I do have the breakdown as far as what we've discussed in the past, which was mutual aid, and how we utilized mutual aid, and how mutual aid was utilized by us. Since my last report on 9/6/16, we used mutual aid 25 times, so that's a 9/6 to 12/31, we used them 25 times. And how I break that down is, we utilized the City of East Hampton 17 times. Out of that 17 calls for service, 15 of those were because we didn't have a paramedic between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM, so we needed ALS. So we called them 15 times for paramedic. We called them twice for primary transport as well. And then we had them over for a couple of fires, which I'll get into a little bit later. In, for Westfield, we utilized Westfield four times. Out of that four times, we had one intercept from them, one primary transport, and two fire responses. We utilized North Hampton for one paramedic intercept. We utilized the City of Holyoke for two fire responses, and we received a mutual aid response from West Hampton for, also for that. We delivered mutual aid to the other communities seven times, four of those to East Hampton, three of those to Westfield. So, we, again, we're providing mutual aid as well. As far as what we had recently, of course, you're all well aware of the two structure fires we had in town, I know you are, and we had two structure fires. First one was on December 16th at 15 East Street, the call came in at 12:27 hours. We had 11 of our firefighters from town respond to that. We responded with an engine and an ambulance. We also had mutual aid from the City of East Hampton, Town of West Hampton, Holyoke, and Westfield. On December 25th, Christmas night, we had a structure fire come in at 6 Karen Lane at 22:09 hours. Again, we had 11 members from our department on Christmas night respond, so it was a really good turnout. Southampton Fire responded with two engines and ambulance, along with mutual aid from East Hampton, Holyoke, and Westfield. Both fires utilized not only firefighters, but also the Police Department helps out tremendously in those initial minutes of getting equipment together, and getting hose lines out, and getting hydrants tagged. So we wanna thank the Police Department for all their help in that capacity, as well as we had help from civilians on Karen that night. People came out of the woodwork and helped us with tagging hydrants and pulling hose lines, so we wanna thank those people as well, because it takes everybody to get that initial 10 minutes of getting all the equipment out, the hose lines out, the hydrants dressed, the water sources and whatnot. So, everybody helps out in that capacity. So, you know, we wanna, as, from the Fire Department, we wanna thank everybody for that. Ben Hogan was tremendous that night as well. He came by, he ended up delivering at 1:00 in the morning pizza and coffee to all of us, so that was on Christmas night, so, only Ben could get pizza on Christmas night.
Right.
It's amazing. So, as far as the structures themselves go, they were both good saves. Unfortunately, there's a little bit more damage to the East Street, older home had some issues, but the Karen Lane was a good save as well, and it was knocked down, so we're very proud of that, and proud of the response that we've had. Any questions? Any, any questions for me on that? The last thing to mention is the Fire Department Association is holding a raffle. Tickets can be purchased by any member. Half of the proceeds are going to go to any and all fire victims in the town of Southampton. Ten dollars per ticket, three tickets for twenty. Drawing is January thirtieth. So, just, the chief wanted me to send a little plug on the raffle.
Who should they contact?
Any member of the Fire Department has raffle tickets.
And what are you raffling off?
It's going to be, there's a first, second, and third prize. The first prize is going to be a television, fifty-two-inch flat-screen television. Second and third prizes are going to be monetary.
Okay. And a free ride on a fire truck.
If you'd like one shot.
No, it's for, it's for a friend.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bet you'll escort them.
But I know personally, I think the others have too. The two fires that were in town here, I've got nothing but great compliments for the crew. So, pass that along to them.
I certainly will.
And yourself.
I certainly will.
So, I have a question, Patrick. Did we assist in the fire in Holyoke?
No.
No.
The Southampton Fire Department did not. They didn't request us for service. So...
They had certainly enough people there.
They had, they had enough responses from other communities going, plus their own departments. So...
Right.
You know, I, again, a lot of that is geographic. If it's closer to the town lines is where we, they would call us. Same, same with us. If we're closer to Westfield, we're going to call Westfield. If we're closer to, you know, East Hampton, we call it East Hampton. So, a lot of that happens with all of the departments as well. So, whatever, the closest community will go.
A question unrelated but related. Burning permits, is the season open yet?
Uh, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
January fifteenth.
So, Saturday mornings?
Saturday morning, come on down.
What time again for the public?
It's usually between, I believe we do it starting at eight A.M.
Eight to ten, maybe?
We go till ten.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think it's eight to ten.
Okay, is it going to, the option of a season pass?
Seasonal pass versus a one day. Yeah, exactly.
So, hopefully...
That will still be happening. So...
Hopefully, people buy a lot of season passes and...
That would be easiest, yeah. So, they still have to call in to make sure that it's a, not a red flag day. Because as we get closer towards April and May, the weather changes. Things are very dry. So, you know, it depends on the day on whether you can burn or not. And so, they have to call down to the fire station to confirm that and give their number. Then we can log it.
Okay, so hopefully, they get down there early.
Yes.
So, I have another question.
Sure.
The Hampton ponds ice, do you get involved in that and the ice thickness? Or is it Westfield Fire Department?
Westfield takes care of that.
Yeah.
Yep. We have no resources for any of that. We have no water rescue. We have no boats.
Because I know it's, you know, surrounded by Southampton too.
It is.
And maybe we should also contact Westfield to see, to tell people in Southampton when to not go on that ice because it hasn't been cold enough now. I mean, what is it normally? Do you know?
Well, they've been fishing on that for a while.
They, they have been on it for a while.
Like, in most of the ponds around the area, the people have been on it for a while.
I don't know what Westfield's policy is as far as whether they monitor the ice and give approval because most fire departments won't do that. They won't take on the liability of saying, "Don't be on the ice or be on the ice."
What Westfield does though, huh?
I, I don't know. I don't know. My question is, I, my answer is, I don't know if they do that or not. I would be more apt to think that it would be the environmental folks, the environmental police that would, that would monitor that or the DCR, that's actually down there already, monitoring. So, I would assume it's one of those folks, not us, not the Fire Department, who generally don't. So...
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Take care.
Thank you. Great job.
I am going to jump back to old business because I missed a bullet here. It's discussion of name change from selectmen to select board. Jackie, you brought that up. Do you want to maybe give a little?
Yes, and I did talk to Virginia Ahart because they're working on the bylaws. And there's five women on that committee and they've already discussed doing that. And so, they're on their way of doing that.
Do you know if it takes anything more than just a vote of the board to do that?
I think because of legal title, we should run that by the town council.
I don't know. I think we should run it by town council. I do know that it, informally, it's, it seems to be happening in communities. And a way to avoid terminology issues, they use, they now use the abbreviation SEL. So, it will be, you know, S.E.L. Martin. And, and so, you don't get into other, other issues there and refer to select board. So...
So, if you can check with legal...
I'll check with town council.
But pending the answer coming back, does anybody have any issues with changing it?
Not at all.
You're sure? Yeah, I mean, I think it just more addresses the people on the board. So...
I'm okay with that. Yes.
Okay, so why don't you get us the answer, put it on the next agenda, and we'll take a vote then? Thank you. Now, town hall maintenance for new business. Who has that one? Bob, is that you?
We've had some discussions about that. I had a recent discussion with Randall about the person who is here. And the short-term resolution is to try and provide some support or training to the individual who, up until recently, has just been emptying, emptying trash and taking out recycling to expand to other types of maintenance. Then there, I think the reason why this is on the agenda is some have suggested that we need to put some money into the eighteen budget for this purpose, to have more general maintenance, you know, wash windows and do other, other routine tasks. I mean, do, do other than routine tasks in terms of maintaining the building. So...
I, I remember, and I'm going to go back last year because, or in January, so everything was last year.
Yeah, right.
Last year, there was a committee. Heather was on it, Randall was on it, I was on it. And part of it was putting a list together of the duties that this person would do. It was a different person at the time, I believe. This is a new person. But the person, I think, was dedicated half-time to doing maintenance at the various buildings and half-time on the Highway Department. And there was a list. So, I'm sure there's still a list out there. So, maybe if we can recreate that because it meant cleaning the floors, emptying the trash, doing a lot of things that maybe got put by the wayside when a new person came on.
And we've had some complaints about the restrooms.
Yeah.
Especially women's.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe you can ask Randall for that listing because he, he was in control of it. So...
Would it be possible finding out the price of what it would cost to bring a company in here once or twice a year to do the entire polishing the floors, everything?
I, I believe that was part of the, what the committee was looking at at the time, either bringing somebody in just to do some semi-annual work or taking over completely and using a vendor versus one of the staff members. So, if you can ask Randall all those questions, I'm sure he has that information. Then maybe we talk about it on the next board meeting before town meeting. Uh, okay, after that then.
The next one, after that?
Yeah, yeah, because we're only going to have a short time then.
What's the date of that next meeting we're talking about?
Twenty-fourth.
After that.
Yeah, the one after that.
Oh, after that.
It'd be two weeks after that, right?
Yes. That would be, I think it's the seventh or the eighth. I can, I can bring it right, I can bring it up here.
The seventh, the first one? All right, seven and twenty-one.
Yes, seventh.
Well, I'll tell you what, when you, when you get the information, why don't you put it on the agenda?
Tuesday, the seventh.
Yep, the seventh.
And we'll go from there, yeah. Okay, unless I'm missing something, it doesn't seem like we have any PCFs or PRFs?
Uh, they're coming, but we don't have them yet. I know that the PPPB has some.
Okay, so we'll have to wait for that. Licenses, permits, none of those either?
Oh, you know what? Randall's going on vacation, so we won't get any of that information back for like a week or so.
Well, again, as soon as you get it, put it on the agenda, we'll deal with it. It's not time critical, all right? Okay, other documents requiring signatures, payroll bill warrants. We have already gone through those. Calendar and announcements, special town meeting, January twenty-fourth, seven o'clock. We've already gone through those.
No executive sessions.
No executive session, so we're quickly at the end of the agenda.
That's why you're cheering.
Okay, again, if anything, nope, anybody else have anything that they want to talk about? Bring up. Okay, so we get to go home early tonight if we have a motion?
Well, I was going to let you, but here we go. I'm just curious, the policies we have for snow, I had a person complain about the plowing on Montgomery Road, that they felt that it wasn't plowed properly. And I'm just, again, I know Randall's not here, but if anybody's aware of how the plowing is done, you know, where do they start, the beginning of the town? I mean, just so that people understand a timeline of when the plowing gets done. Does anybody know?
If I remember, that, that got brought up before and we directed everybody to go to Randall because he's the one that has the schedule and he can tell people. I don't think any of us have really an idea.
I don't know.
So, I would direct them to Randall. If Randall's not there, whoever's in his stead.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, just about the, the town parking lot and, you know, the shoveling and on the walkways. And I know that there's been times when people have come in at work here that it's been taking a long time for things to get shoveled. And that's been, I've heard complaints about that. Have you seen that, Bob? Any problems there?
No, but I know that, looking out, that it looked like the work was needed and we, we had to order it up.
Yeah, I would think at the town hall, they go to town administrator and you can convey that to Randall or his, his crew.
Because what time do you come in?
That's for Jackie.
I am not supposed to be here till nine. I'm, I'm off in here at eight-thirty. But the, the regular staff will be here even a little before that.
Okay. And Randall's crew's in there early. I think they start at seven, unless there's a storm and they start earlier.
No, it should be done before the employees here come, come in.
Yeah. Okay, so if there's an issue, you would contact him? Good, thanks. Anything else want to discuss? Okay, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is closed. Thank you.